Roll call.
Liquor Commissioner Byrne.
Aye.
Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Deputy Commissioner Markwart.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. First item is approval of the April twenty first, twenty twenty liquor and licensing commission minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Motion to approve. Or second?
Okay, roll call.
Liquor Commissioner Byrne.
Aye.
Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Aye.
Deputy Commissioner Markwart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we only have one item. It's a Rudfee Enterprises, Inc., DBA Vernon Hills Convenience Store, one forty-five Town Line Road, request for a class N liquor license.
Is, is this the same owner?
I believe so.
It's the same owner, right, of the seven eleven? The guy who was the franchisee of the seven eleven?
Yeah, I think going back, yeah, I think going back in time. I, I think, Mark, you could speak to that, can't you? Or, no, Mike Atkinson. Mike, is he?
He's right here, hang on.
Yeah, yeah, because seven eleven closed the stores because it didn't have a gas pump in front of it.
Uh, yeah, correct, that's their new policy. If you don't have a gas pump, they won't renew your franchise. So, uh, the seven eleven has gone away, and the franchise owner for seven eleven is the same guy that'll be the owner for what will be Vernon Convenience Store.
That's what I thought I heard, too.
I, I, I don't think so, no.
So it's basically going to be the same operation as what was already in place, the whole license and everything?
That's correct. And it's that type N license whereby you can have beer and wine on the shelves, but if you want to sell liquor, it's limited in size, has to be behind the counter in a secure location and so forth.
Right.
Okay. Is there any other comments or questions here?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Deputy Commissioner Markwart.
Aye.
Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Aye.
Liquor Commissioner Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Since there's, I don't think there's any other business that come before the liquor license commission, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor indicate by aye.
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 Ayes have it. Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Now we gotta take a break till we start the board meeting.
Where'd I go?
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Okay. Okay. We welcome all to the Village Board of Vernon Hills Virtual Board Meeting. Uh, we have gone to this virtual meeting format to maintain social distances to abide by the statewide stay-at-home order. Attendees will be able to listen and watch this meeting. Our chat and other features of the Zoom platform are disabled. Uh, attendees have been instructed to provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to social@vhills.org. All input received by six forty-five P M. will be shared with the board during the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Input provided after six forty-five will be shared with the board after the conclusion of the meeting. As with all Village meetings, a copy of this virtual meeting will be posted on the Village YouTube channel. Thank you for your interest and participation. Okay. Well, any stutter, any citizens that sent in emails and wish to address the board?
No, sir. There has been no communication from anyone outside the Village Hall.
Okay. Well, the first order of business.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, if you don't, if, if I could, I'd like to interrupt for just a second here.
Yeah.
Um, you'll probably notice, I can't tell where he is on your screen, but he's two blocks below me on, on my Zoom screen. Um, a bearded gentleman, I wanted to introduce Kyle Craddy. Kyle Craddy is the new Chief Financial Officer, appointed by Lauderbach and Amen to oversee the Finance Department here in the Village of Vernon Hills. He is an additional staff member that is being appointed to help oversee us, um, and see us into the future, our visionary, if you will. Um, and I'd like to let him have a minute or two just to introduce himself to the members of the board.
Okay.
You know, I'm, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, you know, just a little bit on my background. I have a bachelor's degree from St. Ambrose University in Davenport, Iowa, in economics and finance. And I have a master's degree in, uh, public administration from NIU. I've spent the last, uh, ten years with the Park District of Oak Park. Kind of went up the ranks from being, um, an accounting supervisor up to being the Director of Finance for the last, uh, seven years. Through that, I have experience, obviously overseeing, uh, payroll, uh, information technology, budget preparation, audit preparation, tip creation, um, and a lot of other different areas. And so I've now moved over to Lauderbach and Amen to, um, work here, um, for Vernon Hills. You know, like I said, I'm excited to be here. Um, day one for me, and so I'm still obviously learning a lot of what's going on here, and I look forward to working with all of you. The last piece I will add is I know, um, that you're in some of the, the paychecks that you did receive, there was, um, a difference from last year. That wasn't how our software was set up, and so we will be correcting that, um, in the coming week. Um, so you will be getting the difference. Uh, the system was set up on a bi-weekly payroll basis for you guys instead of on a yearly pay, on a yearly basis. So it did do the taxes incorrectly. So we will be correcting that for you, um, ASAP.
Okay.
Well, welcome.
And, uh.
Yeah, welcome, Kyle.
Well. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. You got a, you got a vote on this one?
No, sir. He's, uh, he's an appointee from Lauderbach and Amen, and he's here to help oversee.
Oh, that's right. That's if we go out and hire a full-time finance director. Is that accurate, Trustee Schultz?
That would be the case.
He's out, he's outsourced.
Yeah. Okay. Well.
No problem with outsourcing. I just think that the appointed official, uh, who holds the title of the Finance Director or Treasurer or whatever should be an employee, just like you were at all those other places before you went to, uh, Lauderbach and Amen, Kyle.
Well, we'll cross that bridge in a future date. All right. First, I, proclamation is Teacher Appreciation Week, May fourth through May eighth. Uh, teachers make schools great. Teachers work to open students' minds uh, to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. Teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. Teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. Teachers continue to influence, influence us long after our school days are only memory. Teachers continue to influence, uh, long after our school days. Already, is that a double? I guess we got that in there twice. Uh, I, now I, Roger Byrne, Village President proclaimed, uh, today, today, National Teacher Day and the period of, uh, May fourth through May eighth as National Teacher Week in Vernon Hills. Okay. Any comments on that one?
I just like to say, it's, it's, it's been interesting since the schools have been closing that, some of the comments I've been hearing that they're, they're doing an outstanding job of, of e-learning and, and constantly working with the kids on a daily basis. I think some parents have really, I've heard from several people who said they really wish we'd go back to a different math because Common Core is a little difficult when you haven't learned it that way. But, um, yeah, I've, I've heard nothing but great stuff about what the teachers have been doing through all of this.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, so.
We're gonna send copies of this to all five high schools and, uh, four, I guess it is, elementary schools?
We can, certainly, yeah.
We have five high school?
Yeah.
Were you counting Carmel?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. Uh, next is, uh, Village President's proclamation, Na- National Police Week Peace Officers Memorial Day. The Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. The members of the Law Enforcement Agency of Vernon Hills play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Vernon Hills. It is important that all citizens, uh, know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of, uh, their law, law enforcement agency. And that members of our Police Department recognize their duty to serve, uh, the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and, uh, disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The men and women at Vernon Hills Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Roger L. Byrne, President of the Village of Vernon Hills, call upon all citizens of Vernon Hills and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May tenth to the sixteenth, twenty twenty's Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observations in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service, uh, to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Vernon Hills to observe Friday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty's Peace Officers Memorial Day. In honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the Village of Vernon Hills to be affixed this day, May fifth, May fifth, twenty twenty. Chief, Pat, you guys want to say something for being truly appreciated?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to, uh, just, uh, accept that on behalf of the, uh, entire Police Department, the men and women that, uh, you see out on the streets and, uh, don't want, uh, to, to overlook our detectives, our communication officers, our community service officers, uh, the fine men and women that work behind the scenes in administrative roles in, um, support and analyst roles. We couldn't do our job without them, and it, it, it really is, uh, wonderful to work in a community with such a strong partnership and so much support, uh, from the public and our other, uh, our other institutions. So it, it, it really is in challenging times, uh, quite rewarding to, um, to serve in such a great community. And I will, uh, share the proclamation, uh, with the entire staff. Thank you.
Okay, Chief, you're welcome. Okay. Uh, Patrick Zimmerman, do you, Deputy Chief, let him say anything?
I'll, I'll just echo what the chief said. I mean, this, we have an outstanding Police Department. The, the men and women do a, a great job for the community, but it goes both ways. We appreciate your support and the board's support, the community's support, and all our partners. We couldn't do it without them. So thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Public Works Week proclamation. Public Works, uh, services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. The support of an outstanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal. The quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is ver- vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. The efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding and importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Roger Byrne, the, the President of the Village of Vernon Hills, do hereby proclaim the week of May seventeenth through May twenty-third, twenty twenty as National Public Works Week in the Village of Vernon Hills. And I call upon all citizens and civic operations to acquaint themselves with the problems involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Okay. Is Dave there?
Dave is here. Uh, thank you very much. Appreciate the board recognizing, uh, public works for that week. It's been interesting with, uh, coronavirus and what impact it's had on people's lives. Very pleased as far as some of the essential duties that we have to provide services for our residents, uh, very important, uh, whether it's water, sewer, uh, the roadways, people walking along the paths, uh, enjoying the, uh, the, the lakes and the open space that Vernon Hills has to offer, uh, and just really appreciate the support, not only from the, the board, but, uh, residents are extremely helpful to us, too. They're our eyes and ears. They point out things, uh, especially more recently, since they've been out, um, pointing out just things that are important to them. So, uh, just appreciate everyone's support and recognizing us.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, the men and women of the Public Works Department.
Will do.
Okay. Uh, next is the ambiguous vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve A through M?
So made. Uh, can I make a que- or in fact, a question on E, G, and H on Advanced Business Network? I question be, or it's, uh, basically about two hundred thousand dollars worth separated. And on H, we have a Phase One, which means there's another phase to it, which is probably another forty-eight thousand dollars. So I just want to pull it just to go over from my understanding.
Okay. All right, well.
The first concurs.
And the first and second?
Second.
Okay. So we need a, um, a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, F, I, J, K, L, M. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, there is.
Second.
Second. Okay. Well, roll call on that.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item E. Uh, this is the Approval and Passage of Ordinance, uh, twenty twenty dash zero six three. An ordinance authorizing approval and payment to Advanced Business Networks, uh, Inc. for additional information technology support for fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one for an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And John, uh, do you want to speak to this one?
I am here, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Uh, E is, uh, replenishing the hours that the previous, uh, employee who served in GIS and IT support, uh, used to cover for us. As you'll recall, last year, that employee resigned to take a similar position in Sarasota, Florida. Uh, it caught us a little bit off guard as that employee was the in-house IT support when he wasn't doing GIS services. So the ordinance, uh, gives us hours from our IT service provider to supplement the Village Hall with infrastructure, uh, development, which will lead into the, which will lead into some of the other ordinances I'll talk about next. But there was, there was hours onsite, so it was almost like a rolling forty-hour-a-week onsite IT support that walked out the door when that employee resigned. Uh, we did a study and looking at hours, uh, when you add benefits in and the pension costs, we believed it was more efficient to go, uh, with our IT provider to supplement the services needed.
Is there any questions or comments on it?
Motion to approve.
No.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, G.
Okay, on, on G, uh, the ordinance authorizes the expenditures for a five-year annual licensing support agreement for, uh, VMware in the amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, so I'll be the first to say I'm not an IT expert, and I had a feeling this was going to come up, so I asked the IT staff, uh, to prepare a, a brief comment for me to share with that, and that.
John, uh, on G is the other Advanced Business Networks one for the SAN.
I was gonna get to that one. Was F, was F polled as well, or, or no?
F, F was approved, G wasn't.
Okay, I thought all three were.
G is the storage area network, which is, um, computer lingo for, you know, servers and the, the, the IT.
Thirty thousand.
Okay. I apologize, I'll pick it up. I thought, uh, in my transport over to this, uh, room, I thought that all three were polled. Uh, clo- closing up on F, that was a licensing agreement to support our, uh, VMware. G is an ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty-five in the amount not to exceed thirty dollars, or thirty thousand dollars, uh, to Advanced Business Networks, uh, for our Village Hall Storage Area Network. So it's called a SAN, and this is an upgrade that's going to allow us, uh, to provide data for our new software systems and upgrades known as Munis, which are going to allow us to, uh, do additional work to include our community development, being able to deploy inspectors in the field with tablets. And that upgrade will allow them to communicate, hopefully paperlessly, uh, back to the Village Hall where processing can occur. So the, the storage area networks are basically, uh, such electronic storage bins that allow for additional software upgrades. Our current, uh, SANS are nearing end of life, and we were advised by our provider if there's to be any software upgrades for anything, including the software that LNA implements or uses here, or any additional services that we'd like to enhance, we have to have newer storage area networks or SANS. This is a, uh, an agreement for our IT service provider, ABN, to make these purchases and upgrade. This is Phase One, and, and as you can tell, if there's a Phase One, it, uh, there will be a Phase Two and Phase Three next year as we, uh, increase our capabilities here.
Are there any comments or questions on item G?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item on is, it was pulled as H. Approval and Passage of Ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six six. An ordinance authorizing approval of payment to Advanced Business Networks for information technology support for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one in a, in an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. So as, as we discussed, uh, the outsourcing of the previous in-house, uh, component, which was GIS and IT support, uh, prior to that, for our IT, for the majority of our IT work, we use a consultant, uh, ABN, to provide us hours. The arrangement the village has is to purchase the hours in advance, uh, in a coordinated deployment for our normal maintenance. Uh, as you may have, uh, as you may recall, earlier this year, uh, we were, we were hit with a virus, and one of the benefits to having the hours prepaid is we don't need to make calls to, uh, have people come in. The, the system is monitored by ABN, the system is maintained by ABN, and as you can see by, uh, the prices, uh, it is, is more beneficial, it is beneficial for the village, uh, to purchase the hours in a coordinated block versus having to use emergency hours or in-house IT personnel to not only maintain the systems, but respond when there are, uh, attacks on the village network. So this is one of the, the prepaid payments. Uh, you will see others throughout the year. There are emergency hours that we buy, and there are also hours for the communication center that are built out separately. This is a block specifically for the maintenance, the maintenance of our networks, uh, here at the Village Hall in the amount of not to exceed forty-eight thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Who's the second?
Mike.
I am second.
Okay.
Michael.
Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, under, uh, unfinished business budget update, uh, and then Executive Order Declare- Declaration, uh, twenty oh six. But the budget update is rather important to say to use.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll jump out of, out of order here just because it's a little bit easier. The executive order, as we have done, uh, every board meeting since March twenties, March sixteenth, this is an extension of the executive order, the declaration of an emergency done by the President back in March. It just allows us to continue to function in emergency capacity. Uh, the President will be signing that tonight. There's no board action necessary, and this allows the emergency order to stay in place until our next regularly scheduled board meeting, which would be May nineteenth.
Okay.
And then I'll, if it's okay, I'll just move directly into the, uh, budget discussion.
But no timeline to present.
Yeah, that's for sure. Uh, this is a follow-up to the discussion we had on April second. If you recall, the Village Board meeting staff presented some suggestions on ways potentially to reduce budget expenditures for the twenty twenty-one, uh, fiscal year. After some discussion, the board asked staff to develop a prioritized list of potential budget cuts for the board's consideration. Staff, uh, has worked very hard together with, and effort to identify as many potential budget reductions as possible while still continuing to provide the same high level of service to, to the community that they have come to appreciate. In response to your request, staff has submitted, uh, the Excel spreadsheet, which I believe you received yesterday for your review and consideration. Budget items on the list are prioritized as an A, a B, or a C. Staff would propose that all the items with an A be deferred or eliminated from the budget until such time as, um, the economy recovers and we may get to some semblance of, of, uh, the new normal, which would probably be sometime, who knows? I'm not even going to guess. Um, the elimination or, or implementation of all of the items labeled as a priority A would result in a savings of roughly two point five million dollars across all funds. Now, there's only a couple of items with, uh, a rating, a priority rating of B. rating of B totaling about three-hundred thousand dollars, but one of those is the road rehab project, and that's going to require some immediate input on part of the village board. Currently, we anticipate the motor fuel tax that generates somewhere around six-hundred thousand dollars, and that is taking into account the loss of fuel tax that is occurring as we speak. As part of the village, villages' road rehab project, the village had budgeted about a million dollars to significantly enhance the amount of roadway in the village that would be addressed this season. This is curb sidewalks, gutters, and repaving where necessary. If the board felt it appropriate, the village could eliminate the section of West Moreland Drive between Route eighty-three and Lakeside Drive from the twenty-twenty road rehab project, saving an additional two-hundred thousand dollars. This decision would need to be made virtually immediately, like tonight, as paving work in the village has already started, and we would need to notify the paving contractor before any work begins on West Moreland. Dave Brown can fill in any of the details on this.
Yeah, Dave, how, if I can, how, how important, I mean, is that a section of road that can go another year, or is that, I haven't driven down that in a while, is it pretty bad, or?
It, it is showing signs, and we think it should be repaired. Let me, let me give a more global discussion on the, the road program. We did a pavement management study. It showed that we would be in need of about one-point-two million on asphalt alone, but we usually do other things. We do curbs, sidewalks, so there's, we really look for one-point-four million a year. We did drop this program for this year down to a million already. We are allowed by contract and IDOT rules to cut a program after its bid by up to twenty-five percent. This would be a reduction that would be within that tolerance. In terms of the bigger picture, my largest concern with the road program is more in the long term. We have a number of roads that were all built as part of the Greg's Landing development. Those roadways started being put in in the nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, and we will have a number of roads that are all needing to be addressed around the same time. I'm already seeing on Greg's Parkway that there, there are some needs for patching. We're continuing to do that. It is money that we will have to spend at some time. The larger picture of my, and my concern is, if we don't keep up with our road program, we will be up in Greg's Landing, and we will start heading towards not a twenty-five-year program, but return back to where we were two or three years ago, and we may not get up into completing those roadways at a reasonable time, and then it starts costing us more money because we are getting into more patching and potentially reconstruction if you don't do that. So, my recommendation is that we do still continue with it. I understand what, where we're at right now. The board's being faced with a lot of challenges, so if we had to remove it, it's certainly acceptable. It just means that we have to make it up in future years.
I have a question. How heavily traveled does that stretch?
Oh, West Moreland. So, a lot of people coming from the south into our village on West Moreland. I know village manager does that. So, West Moreland is a gateway through the village. It also goes through some questionable soil conditions that are under those roadways. There's wetlands and poor soils on either side, so the roadways kind of reflecting that soil type. So, if you drive it, you, you will see the, the condition of the road. It is showing its wear. That's my thoughts.
It's not as busy as Deer Path, but it's probably a reasonably close second. Anybody who lives in Hawthorne Club takes West Moreland to get to southbound eighty-three, and you also wind up picking up traffic, probably all the traffic coming out of Indian Creek that needs to go southbound on eighty-three. I know I take it on a very, very regular basis.
I mean, the mild winters help, right? As far as wear and tear on these roads.
Yeah, the road, I mean, you know, from the casual observer, it's, doesn't seem to be in distress. But again, you know, while we're, we're in a thirty-year cycle right now with Hawthorne Club and Cherry Valley, right, Dave? Because, I mean, that was ninety, ninety was the, the top course was placed in Hawthorne Club, and we started replacing it last year, and will finish this year. So, we're basically on a thirty-year program in that area anyway. When was the last time West Moreland was prepaid?
West Moreland depends which stretch, I believe it was. Some areas were nineteen ninety-five, and some were two thousand three. And, and again, in terms of whether we include a two-hundred thousand dollar stretch or not, that's not a make or great deal for me. It's really looking towards our long-term budget and the ability to address other roads in the future, and, you know, so that's really what my thoughts are.
Yeah. Well, there needs to be a, a change at the state level regarding MFT, because we can't keep going on, on a dollars per, yeah, pennies per gallon basis. It needs to be on a percentage basis. I, I mean, right now, I've gotten eight weeks to the quarter tank. It's been, no, ten weeks. I've, I've used a quarter tank of gas over the last ten weeks.
And, and really hitting on what, what you mentioned, we're also moving in a world where we have more electric cars too. So, I agree, there needs to be a, a better funding mechanism.
So, you're recommending we fund this, Dave, correct?
That, that is my recommendation. I, you know, I'm not falling on the sword of it, but that is my recommendation.
Again, the only reason, the only reason I brought this up is if we needed to save every dollar, this would be the way of doing it. I, I agree with Dave, that road is in pretty rough shape, and not only does it provide a feeder route for all the traffic that Trustee Schultz mentioned, but you have Lakeside Drive, you have Court of Spruce, Court of Birds, all the apartment buildings, and the school buses that travel down that road every day.
Well, are we talking about moving this to next year, or?
That would-
We would, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, in, next year, we're hoping to do the Lakeview project, and I think Marco and I will have some more discussions on that. It would be pushed off two years, but we, Lakeview federal job.
Then I think we should just go ahead and go with it. Okay.
That's fine. We, we certainly can make that happen, or we'll just make it happen. As Dave was just starting to allude to, there's only one item. It's actually three lines on the spreadsheet with a priority code of C, and those are the ones we really shouldn't touch if we, if we can possibly help it. This is the Lakeview Fairway and Route sixty project, which is budgeted at one-point-six-two million dollars. Now, this project is being funded through an eighty percent match from the government. If the village does not fund this project this year, there's a possibly, possibility of losing grant funding for this project entirely. Now, on, on the plus side, if you want to look at it that way, there's also a possibility that due to the state financial and, and the federal government's financial situation with, with all that's happening in the world right now, this project may get pushed down the road by another year. If this project gets pushed down the road another year, then we would be able to free up the funds we have budgeted in this year for general operating expenses. Again, Dave can explain the, the funding mechanism for this, and I know he's had some reconstruction meetings with the, the representatives from the state on this, as late as I think last week.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mark. So, in terms of this project, where, where are we at? We are going through phase two. We just had the kickoff meeting. That's when they prepare plans and prepare things for bidding. They're starting to have discussions in terms of acquiring some land around there. With Mike Atkinson's help and our attorney's help, we've been able to work through some discussions of acquiring many of those parcels already, whether it's the park district's property at the northwest corner of Hawthorne and Lakeview, whether it's discussions with the Hawthorne Village Commons ownership that dedicated land right-of-way and easements to us, or whether it's Bear's Fit who has cooperated with some temporary easements. We have a number of parties that have worked with us on it, and that's helping reduce some costs. Where we really are is, next year it is slated. There's a number of other, other projects that are competing that are in this year's program that might not be ready, and they may bump up against ours, and that may push us out one more year. There's a silver lining in that, but we want to be prepared. Ultimately, where we're at in the long duration of the project is, we're pretty much at the two-yard line, and if we cross the goal line, we will receive federal construction dollars of three-point-seven million. They'll pay another third of a million dollars for construction inspection. So, we're just about to get a little over four-point-one million dollars if we move forward, and that's really the eighty percent match that Mark had alluded to. So, I guess my, my, my strong recommendation is, this would not be the project to cut.
Yeah, to cut, because, well, this one we've been working on for how many years?
This was a offshoot of the extension of Fairway Drive through the V-HAC, all the way from forty-five to sixty, and it's an extension of that project. So, decades.
Yeah, many moons. Okay, does anybody get, have any comments or questions on this one?
Not on that particular item, but I do have some questions on some of the other line items.
Fairway.
Go ahead.
On four different, or three different lines, the count two-one-zero-three-zero-three-zero, we have police purchase of vehicles, build out two less, police purchase of vehicles, will not purchase any vehicles, and then police purchase of vehicles, not purchase for police vehicles. And I'm trying to figure out how that hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, which shows in two places, and then the twenty thousand, how that all works. You follow where I'm at there, Mark? You're muted, Mark.
Mark, you gotta unmute.
I, I, I was unmuted, and I muted myself. I asked that same question of Ed. He said, essentially, that is a, that's an audit accounting thing. It's the, the way they do it, it's like counted twice, because there's money that goes into the fund from the replacement fund, and then there's money that's actually expended for the vehicles. He said, technically speaking, it is the same hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, probably should be counted only once, but that's how, that's how it works, because we have, we have money that-
Yes, as a reduction, it is only counted once.
Right. He, he left it in there and counted as a reduction once. Essentially, what it is, is we would buy the vehicles out of the operating fund, and if we don't, so that would be an expenditure, and then if we had to put money into the vehicle replacement fund, which is sort of how it works, it would be another expenditure, but it's the same money.
Okay.
It's an audit, it's an audit trail thing for finance.
All right. And then the other kind of question was, I just noticed that Libertyville canceled today their, their equivalent of summer celebration, along with all their band activities. So, we've got a lineup, the, the second line, which is Fourth of July slash pageant slash fireworks, and then, of course, under B, we've got summer celebration. Is staff ready to make a recommendation on?
Unfortunately, at this point, based on the announcement by the governor this afternoon, who has said, as far as he's concerned, there will be no gatherings of people greater than ten until a vaccine has been developed.
Right.
Pretty much leaves the decision-making ability out of our hands. Earlier today, Buffalo Grove and Libertyville have both canceled all of their events through the summer, and this was part of the discussion that was going to take place right after I finished my little narrative here, was talk about the, the summer events. Right now, we're canceling the Arbor Theater Summer Concert Series, which was due to begin like in two weeks. We're talking about the Fourth of July Parade, the Fourth of July Fireworks, and Summer Celebration. Those three events right there would save the village roughly two-hundred thousand dollars, but I understand the importance to the community. I think, I don't think we've ever missed one of these events, and I know it'd be a very difficult decision for the board to make, but I think in light of the warnings given to us by the governor, I'm not sure we have a choice.
I'd like to make a comment on that. I think based upon the fact that we're in the northeast subregion, which is Cook County and includes Chicago, there's no way. Because I actually, when I saw that email, I, I emailed Representative Deedich, like, if, you know, if regions within, like Vernon Hills, Lake County, within our subregion of the northeast, can we open, can we reopen some stuff versus, say, parts of Cook County said, no, the whole region's going together, meaning unless, if Chicago's not opening Cook County, then we're not, we're not going to be able to do it. So, let's, let's assume that large gatherings like a summer song Fourth of July, foregone conclusion, will not happen.
And based upon that map, if you notice that the northeast region is subdivided into four or five other regions, I believe we're in region eleven, which includes Lake and McHenry County.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at this through my glass half-full optimistic viewpoint and say that there, since they labeled them that way, there's always the possibility that we may be able to be treated differently at some point in the future. It's not going to be before May twenty-ninth, that's for sure.
Yeah, that was sort of my question to Deedich, and he said, no, it's, everyone's going together in the whole northeast region. So, because I, you know, I was, I was specific. I could, could Lake County open before, say, Cook, and he says, no. But he asked, I guess the state told him at least today that-
Well, Mary Ann Ahern.
Close hand-in-hand.
Mary Ann Ahern from Channel Five asked the question directly.
Really?
So, McHenry County is on the border between Zone One and Zone Two.
Right.
So, is there any chance McHenry County could in, open up along with Zone Two?
Right.
And basically, it was a flat no.
Right. Okay. He said, subregions are, are what is used by IEMA for other purposes, but for purpose of reopening, the state, all counties in the northeast region will open uniformly. So, that tells me, if Chicago's not doing anything, we certainly aren't, and I, I don't get that, because, you know, our schools could potentially open versus, say, Chicago Public, but, you know, I'm not-
I agree.
To clarify, I'm sorry, Mark, clarify your earlier point. It was category four, doesn't require a vaccine, and that allows for fifty people, not, not the-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. The other thing I'm, I'm holding out hope for is, I'm not requesting to cancel Oktoberfest because we're talking about something that's late September, possibly October. We don't know, and I'm kind of, again, holding out hope that maybe we might be able to, if things clear up a little bit, we might be able to have some type of an event. The Park District is interested in, they're, they're going to be canceling Rib Fest. I was told that if the village cancels their events, obviously, they're going to cancel theirs. So, they would be interested in doing something with us, partnering with us, should we have the ability to do some type of an event for Oktoberfest.
The good news is, there were some, and I forgot where the, where it was ongoing, but someone's taken a new approach towards a vaccine. someone's taken a new approach towards a vaccine. Uh, using the RNA to, uh, as opposed to a, uh, a dead virus or whatever. And they were talking about potential mass usage in September. Which might lead to maybe by Christmas, we'd have enough people vaccinated.
I, that's a wishful thinking.
Yeah.
So that is the proposal for the budget. I guess there's no, there's no need to vote on this. My suggestion would be is, is we're just going to go ahead and implement as many of these things as well. All the items marked as item A, um, we're just going to go ahead and implement those. We're just not going to make those purchases or those expenditures. Should something turn around miraculously before the end of the next fiscal year, we can always come back and revisit that. Otherwise, we'll address this as we start to put our budgets together in November, December of this current year.
So basically what we're saying is that, uh, we're looking to eliminate a 2.5 million dollars from the budget.
Correct.
And as a result of that, we are officially declaring that there will not be a Vernon Hills pageant. There will not be a 4th of July parade. There will not be a 4th of July fireworks display and there will not be summer celebration.
Is there a concurrence from the board on that?
Yeah.
Should we?
Yes.
Can we in fact vote on it?
You know, we don't have, the item is not specifically, uh, laid out on the agenda in order to, to take action at this-
Yeah, that's what I thought. So. It's the intent of the board at the next regular scheduled meeting to officially. But the consensus of the board is such at this juncture, what I stated before is a truism.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah. I mean, as far as voting on it, the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. If you want to take, if you want to take an official action to vote to eliminate those events, that's fine. We'll have that prepared.
All right. What else do we got to discuss on the budget itself?
You know, before we move away from this, I, I don't want to leave everyone with the impression that the future is bleak, although it certainly doesn't look very good today. Um, there is reason for optimism. Unlike the recession 10 years ago, there's plenty of developments, buildings and projects that are still underway or in the planning stages. With construction soon to follow. You know, we've got the, the Waterway Car Wash, which is the former Peacock. Uh, they're doing a whole redesign and renovation of the project. Uh, we got Carson's demolition permit has already been submitted. It is in the review process and I'm going to talk more about that in just a minute. But we got sliced pizza is nearing completion in Melody Farms. Um, they're planning to be open for business on June 1st. Panda Express is finishing, uh, is in the finishing stages of their facility on Route 60. And that should be opening soon for drive-throughs. West Elm Furniture is nearing completion of their new store in the Melody Farm Development. Buttermilk Breakfast Restaurant, again, the same thing, they're moving along and receiving their final inspections, uh, in Melody Farms. They're planning on opening soon. Residential single-family building permit applications this year have exceeded the number of permit requests for the same time period last year, even with all the, uh, the COVID, um, stuff going on. The Philharmonic Building has received concept approval and is heading to the, is heading to technical review. Baxter Credit Union has received village board approval and be submitting their permit application within the next 30 days. Panatoni Development appeared, it will be appearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission early June. To receive approval for 900,000 square feet of light industrial buildings. On the former Darling Farm property. Plans for the redevelopment of Hawthorne Mall are moving forward quickly. Again, I'm going to talk about that in just a second. Uh, the village has received, uh, two new development proposals for retail stores at the shops of Greg's Landing. And a new developer for the property at 888 Forest Edge Drive will be appearing before the committee of the whole very shortly. For concept approval and teardown of the current building. And the construction of another 70,000 square foot light industrial building. So even though unfortunately, even though the, the, uh, the retail portion of our economy is, is not looking very good at this point. There's reason to be optimistic. People are still building. Steep, people still want to come to Vernon Hills and people are still investing in this community. So I don't think anyone should lose hope, um, for the future. I'm off the soapbox now.
We're very fortunate. No question.
Okay. Well.
I do, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I do have one more thing that I think everyone would be interested in. Uh, one of the questions that, that everyone, everyone, a number of trustees have called me or people have asked me recently is, uh, what's happening at the mall? Have we heard anything from Centennial? Uh, are they still moving forward as the project dead? So I thought tonight we're talking about budgets and we're talking about, you know, all the negative stuff going on. I thought maybe I'd take two minutes of your time and explain what's going on at the mall. No, the mall is not dead. On the contrary, for a project of this size and complexity, it's actually moving forward at light speed. Last fall, Centennial submitted their proposal for roughly a $250 million mixed-use development. And requested village, uh, create a TIF district to assist with the cost of the project. The village hired independent consultants to review the TIF request and to assess whether the amount of the TIF was reasonable. Last Friday, the village submitted our response to developer and we're waiting to hear back from them to begin negotiations in earnest. In the meantime, the developer has proposed a very aggressive project schedule. Beginning next week, the developer will begin staging construction materials on the mall property on the Carson site. And begin erecting construction fencing. Demolition of the Carson's building is scheduled to begin on June 1st and is scheduled to take approximately three months. At the same time, the Carson's building is being demolished. Construction work is also scheduled to begin on the portion of, of Ring Road. That runs parallel to Milwaukee Avenue from Route 60 to Ring Road just north of the mall. Uh, this road is going to be straightened to accommodate the three lot subdivision that was approved last year. And will be built along Milwaukee Avenue. Construction of a new 70,000 square foot retail store is scheduled to begin roughly September 1st. With an anticipated completion date of April 30th, 2021. Simultaneously, the demolition of the Sears project is also scheduled to begin around September 1st. Immediately after the finishing of the demolition of the Carson's project. Again, concurrent with the construction of the new retail building. Uh, the construction and development of the three lot subdivision is also scheduled to begin. I want to make it very clear that the village has not entered into a redevelopment agreement with the developer. And a TIF has not been created or approved. At the last board meeting, the board approved an ordinance creating a TIF registry. So that anyone who wanted to be kept up to speed on the status of the project could register and would be notified. More information will be on our website next week. Currently, our consultant is evaluating the feasibility of creating an, uh, TIF district at this location. But all the data is not in negotiations with the developer are underway. But it's important to note, no redevelopment agreement has been reached. Nor have any of the terms surrounding the creation of the TIF. And just to explain a bit further, with all the meetings and public notifications that are legally required for the creation of a TIF. Even if everything went exactly as planned, the earliest that the TIF could be created would be mid to late September. I also want to make this perfectly clear. Even though demolition and construction are scheduled to begin next month and people are going to see a lot of work being done. All this work is being done entirely at the risk of the developer. No deal is in place. No money has been promised. They have deadlines that they need to meet and don't want to risk and loot, risk losing the entire 2020 construction season. While we're still in negotiations. I just thought it was real important to mention that upfront and publicly because people are going to start seeing fencing going up, they're going to see construction work begin. I don't want anybody to jump to the conclusion that we've, we've made a deal somewhere. And all the, the rest of these conversations are for show. That is not the case.
But at what point will the public be apprised of some of the some of the if terms?
Um, oops, I can mute myself. I'm, I'm going to let Jim speak to that. Public be involved in any of the TIF hearings?
Certainly. Uh, that, that will happen after the feasibility study is completed. Feasibility study will be completed over the next month, a month and a half. Uh, at the same time, we continue to go through negotiation relative to the, uh, the, the term sheet, which relates to the TIF. Asked by the developer and ultimately what we're going to agree on. So public hearings relative to the TIF creation. Were May, for early May, I, I think we're probably be looking at mid to late June. We'll start to, uh, conduct public hearings, maybe even into, uh, July. Uh, where the, there will be participation. The, the formation of the TIF still has to be evaluated and that's underway. So I, I, I think we're probably late June and July is when we'll start to take action here publicly, uh, where the public will get involved.
So the public doesn't get involved at all in terms of the terms? Uh, of, of the TIF itself, of what kind of negotiations?
No, that's a negotiation between the, the village and the, and the developer and ultimately with the taxing bodies. But what will happen, I, I, I guess to answer your question directly, there will be an RDA redevelopment agreement that's going to come before you. That will have those terms in it. You'll have to vote on it publicly. So the public then will be able, they'll, they'll be apprised of the RDA and the terms of the RDA. In fact, a copy of the RDA will be available once it's completed before you vote on it. So at that time, the public can appear and speak to the RDA. But up till this, up till, up to that point, the, the, the public would not be involved in the negotiation of the TIF incentive. That's, that's a determination for the village board and, and the developer ultimately, but there will be a public vote.
Actually, trustee Appenham, I think I know where you're going with this. So maybe I can make this clear. Part of the agreement, the redevelopment agreement, uh, that we're discussing will also include discussions with the school district, with the park district, with the fire prevention district. So those entities that are directly affected will be brought in and made part of the agreement. It's our hope and our plan that when the redevelopment agreement, um, without sounding too corny. When this agreement comes before the board for formal approval and signature, we'll be standing arm in arm with, um, with our, with our other members of the community that are affected by this. I don't want anybody to think that again, this is a deal that's done behind closed doors and no one has any input. I think that's where you were coming from.
Yeah, that's actually where I was coming from. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that.
And just so you know, I have, uh, well, we have twice a week meetings with the fire, with the fire protection district now. Um, but I also talked to the superintendent district 73 several times a month. And every time anything appears on the board agenda, I always give them a call and talk to them and give them a heads up as far as what's coming and what it means. So they are in lockstep with us. They know it's, uh, they know what, what we're doing. They know we're moving forward and believe me when I say that when the time's right with the developer. Part of our dis- uh, discussion with the developers will also be with those other taxing bodies.
Very good. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Well, is there any new business or communication to come before the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Trustee Markwart.
Sorry, I had it muted. Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Motion carries. We need to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Uh, first item is the approval of the committee hall meeting minutes of April 21st, 2020. Any comments? Corrections, deletions? Et cetera.
Motion should approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second.
Who was the second, please?
I was.
Thank you.
Wow, Dave. I would have said Carrie.
I know.
Got a chat. No, it's good.
Okay, trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Right. The only item on here is a request for an outdoor dining. And seating establishment permit for Invicto. Uh, located at, uh, 887 North Milwaukee Avenue in Melody Farms.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, uh, the request tonight would include five tables with a seating capacity of 12 customers. Uh, that would be located on the sidewalk in front of the restaurant. That would be on the east side of the building. Uh, Mike, if you can go to the next screen. And as you can see on the drawing in front of you, a fence would be located around the perimeter. Uh, that would separate the public from customers who may be consuming alcohol. There would also be a self-closing, self-latching gate, uh, that would be provided. Uh, the dining area is located in excess of six feet from the curb line in compliance with those requirements. And there would be a five and a half foot clear walking path that would be maintained between the building and the dining area. So. If the cow feels that the outdoor dining request is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution. Approving the outdoor dining license, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your package. And we should have the applicant answer any questions that you may have.
Any comments or questions on this one?
Looks like a great idea to me.
Yeah, the sidewalk is, uh, there's a couple of places where it says, uh, existing concrete is going to remain that, that. In other words, that's the five feet, what is it? Five feet seven or something like that, five feet, six inches? That's all sidewalk?
Yeah, that's all sidewalk. It's five feet, five and seventeenths inches.
Okay.
It's all sidewalk and that's measured to that architectural feature that kind of juts out from the face of the building, but it's all sidewalk.
Okay.
So it's in between the building itself and the seating area, there'll be the sidewalk.
That's the only one of its kind that we have like that, right? Everything else is up against the building.
Uh, that's the, yeah, that's the only one in, uh, Melody Farm that we have this way. And Mike, if you can go to that previous screen. You know, as you could see, the way that sidewalk is set up on that middle picture. Uh, there's the landscape island and then the sidewalk. And then there's that indentation into the landscape area and it just lends itself to a perfect location. The outdoor dining areas, it's just unique for this particular location.
Yeah, I think it's, it, it appears to be better for the overall use of this sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right. I, I, I don't disagree with that, but I do have a problem with, uh, the, having alcohol service out there. Without it being, you know, kind of contained to the building. I find that problematic. I, I have no problem with the concept of the outdoor dining area. But I do have a problem with them allowing alcohol service out there.
Well, it will have a fence around it.
That's-
Yeah, but it's, it's independent. There's no connection to the building where you kind of have to go into the building to go into the gated area. It's out there on its lonesome. It's the first time we've ever done anything like this.
Jim?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I apologize.
I, I mean, I'd agree, but that's, I don't think that's really an area where you're going to have someone sitting there for two and a half hours drinking and eating. It's not like you're in the city where, you know, that's very commonplace. People want to sit outside, eat, they hang out for a couple of hours, they eat and they drink. I don't think this is lending itself to that type of environment. I don't think this is lending itself to that type of environment. I get what you're saying, but I can't imagine someone spending more than half, forty-five minutes having their meal and leaving.
Well, it's gonna have waitstaff service, right?
That's, that's correct.
Right.
And it's not, like I said, you know, as an eating area, if somebody wanted to take their own stuff outside, I got no problem with that, but.
Right.
I just, it, this will be the first one where we haven't really instituted a set of controls where you have to go into the facility to get to the dining area.
But are we, are we allowed that at, at Whole Foods?
Yeah, actually, most of our other ones have some sort of another gate to it. They're, right.
Well, that is kind of an emergency escape, yeah.
I could think of Scotty's on twenty-first.
Is that away from the building?
It's next to the building, but you have to come out of the restaurant and then enter into the area where you're, you know, consuming-
There are, there are a number of them like that.
This is the only one that there's a five-foot separation, but other than that, there's really not much difference.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Gotta be quicker.
Yes, you do.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Trustee Markwart.
Bandwidth issues.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who's David Sloan?
What's that?
Oh, there's Mr. Sloan.
Hi. Thanks, guys, for approving. We've just been really busy with Cinco de Mayo. So I had to run out to the store. We're running out of food.
That's great. Happy Cinco de Mayo.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you still open?
Yeah, we're still open. We're still serving.
Okay, good.
Okay. With no further business to be come before committee halls, there are motion to adjourn.
So may.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Those in favor indicate by a aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any nays? The ayes have it. The committee of the halls adjourned. Thank you. Be safe out there.
Yeah.
Good night all.
Good night.
Good night all.